We have a joint meeting of the Town of Cottage Grove Board of Supervisors and the Village of Cottage Grove Board of Trustees on Thursday, September 27th, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall at 4058 County Grove Inn. Has the Kim taken role call?
I have. I have Hampton, Williams, Fonger, and Duplay for the town, and I have Henrik, Bradcliffe, Allen, Elmore, and Williams for village.
And the meeting was properly posted at the Town Hall and on our website. The village did the same. I'll call the Town Board of Supervisors to order.
Okay, and I'll call the Village Board of Cottage Grove Trustees to order.
And we'll stand for the flag play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is public concerns, public opportunity to speak to the board members about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Your name, please.
Mike McKenna, 3650 Grand Page Road. I'd like to know what is being stored down at the gravel pit and what they're permitted for down there. I was told by the DNR that they're permitted to do mulch and manure, and I found that, I mean, is that what they're doing down there? Because they're right next to-
In those rows?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, I mean, doesn't anybody else here feel like that's an issue to the groundwater down there? And so the creek that, you know, backs up right to it, just about? Nobody in the whole room besides me thinks that's an issue.
Oh, I do. Because don't they go to Lake Kaganza, or where does that creek go to?
It's Little Door Creek.
Okay.
I think it does go to Kaganza, so it does flow into other waters that are important.
Yeah, it seems like it's gonna-
No, they're way through the topsoil and everything down there. It's not like they're filtering that through regular ground. I mean, they're way down toward, you know, whatever they've dug out of there or whatever's left. So I can't believe that they're not a lot closer to the water table there than they normally would be if it was regular land.
And whether with this spring or last fall, the smell from it was really rough.
Yeah, it smelled like the landfill, regular going.
It passed everything at the county. And the county takes care of that for the town. The town does not enforce stormwater.
Is there any regular monitoring by the county or the town?
Not by the town. I couldn't tell you if the county does any or not.
That wasn't set forth when that was approved?
Just that they had to meet their requirements, whatever those were. Back when we approved it two years ago, I think, I remember that, wasn't there a renewal process or something? Didn't we say okay for a year and then we'll revisit it? Or, I don't remember that, but it may be something like that.
I don't recall. I mean, I'm not prepared to answer. I don't have any of that with me.
No, I don't have anything with me, but I remember the discussion and the DNR approved it, and we talked about the groundwater, we talked about the smell, and I think we said, let's try it for a year. I don't know.
I can look for the conditions of that conditional use permit. If anybody's interested in having a copy of those, why don't you email me and I'll share it with you.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Ann Nader. I live in the American Heritage neighborhood, and I had an opportunity a year ago to come and talk with you, Chris, about a possibility of looking at building a bike path at some point that takes our neighborhood and connects it to the village. And today seemed like a great opportunity with the two groups being together to just kind of get it on the record at some point. We would love to look at ways that maybe that could become a possibility. Chris, at the time I met with you a year ago, or a year and a half ago, I know we talked about a possibility being Highway BB, but that's county-owned, I believe, and then possibly looking at airport, and I know that the village has some land that meets up to the airport. I have not done anything since then other than meet with Chris, but it just seemed like a good opportunity to talk about it. We know there's safety reasons why it would be beneficial. We know it would benefit the village, the Chamber of Commerce, to get business in town. And it's just something that if we, if there's ideas or ways that myself or other people in the neighborhood, because I know there's many in American Heritage that would be interested in it, if there's something or things we could do or steps we could take to make that happen, we would welcome ideas and we would be happy to, you know, move in a positive direction that way.
Okay. You guys haven't plotted anything there, have you, at the airport?
Not plotted at the airport, no.
Yeah.
Just in the Commerce Park.
Yeah.
And there is talk about taking land for parkland that would go for a path, but just for a short section between where the business park is and the Quarry Ridge subdivision is. There's already a few houses in there, but there's a 60-foot green space there, and we talked about running a path there. But I don't know what is to the east of that, so the path would kind of end where that pond is. And I'm not sure, I mean, if the airport goes south from there, I know the airport, yeah, so I have to look at it.
Airport would be north of that.
Yeah. North of that intersection, so then what is directly east of it? I don't know.
Private land.
Private land, yeah. Yeah, tough, yeah. So, I don't know.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Moving on, discuss and consider approval of the minutes of the April 30th, 2018 meeting.
I do approve.
Second. So, motion and a second to approve the minutes for April 30th as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Doesn't the village need to do it separately?
Yeah, I think you do both.
Yeah, we'll do our-
The town and the village.
Okay. So, for village trustees, for approval of the minutes of April 30th, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by John and second by Melissa to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
All right. Moving on to discuss and consider park and recreation.
I think you should have the town approve it. Town board approve it separately, so.
I'll second Christie's motion.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? For the town, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Discuss and consider park and recreation. First item is potential future dog park at the former Nat Big landfill. And we included with everything that we sent out, all the previous minutes that we had where we discussed this in the past.
Yep. So, some of it is actually in the landfill meeting minutes, they give.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
Is there anything from recent meetings? Let's see. We have the email. I know the, who's on the landfill committee?
She's not here, right? Steve Anderson, so, and Jeff.
So, nobody from the landfill committees here?
Right.
Okay. I'm just wondering what they discussed at the meeting on Monday night. Was Chris was there?
It wasn't on the agenda Monday night.
Right. What about-
For the dog.
So, with the DNR, though, you discussed something with that on Monday night, right?
Yes, their inspection of it.
Which wasn't specifically for the dog park.
No, it was just for the closed landfill portion.
Right.
Okay.
Well, there hasn't been a lot of discussion about it. I mean, we talked about it a little bit. I mean, some neighbors might presume, some of you are here, about the landfill, right? Or about the dog park.
Right, so maybe we shouldn't-
That's why we're having it on the agenda, so.
Yeah. If we're on the agenda item, any of you want to speak?
Comments from the public there?
I guess I'll start us off here. I'm Karen Lex, and me and my husband Tom live directly across from the landfill, like 65 feet away from it. So I have a few things that we would like to talk about. I believe it's a good idea, but the wrong location. Very disappointed in the communication. I was told in an email on July 17th, we would be notified to the surrounding property owners ahead of time. No one received anything but myself, and thank you for Kim. I had to go door-to-door to notify all our neighbors. My concern is traffic, barking dogs, parking lot, fences, vent pipes. Since we are only 60 feet away from it across the street, along with several other houses, it's way too close. No other dog parks that I researched are this close to houses. We pay between 17 of the houses that I researched right through there, $157,000 a year in taxes. I believe we should have some saved. Also concerned, it will be a hangout for teenagers and speed on our road. I researched 17 county parks, and the smallest one is 11 acres. What is Nat Big? How many acres? Three or five?
I'm not sure. Boy, I-
It can't be more than five.
We have five acres that's outside of the landfill to the south that we bought, but I don't, I couldn't tell you what acreage of the old landfill is off.
It has to be very minimal.
What did, I'm sorry, you said you say 11, they mostly are?
11 is the very smallest.
Where's that one?
And Nat Big can't be any more than that, is my guess.
Do you know where that one is, the location of the 11-acre one?
If you go under Dane County, there's seven parks listed. I can tell you after some people talk or from their own, but.
There's a list right here. A catalog right here.
That's how it goes to allow the other people know. The seven Dane County parks, it's 11 acres, 14, 20, 25, 38, 42, and 79. And I really don't believe Nat Big is more than, in my opinion, 10. We built the township for a reason, and our subdivision does have deed restrictions. No fences, two domestic animals, and our deed also states, no owner shall keep a dog or bark and pay some nuisance to neighbors. So obviously, animals and barking is a concern for me. Dogs do bark, obviously, at dog parks, and may also get out of patrol. I think you need to look at other locations away from houses. None of these other dog parks I researched are close to houses like we are. I did check with the realtor. It would not benefit our home value. And you could be asking, well, the same could go for the landfill. The huge differences, parking lot, dog park. We built, when we built, we built specifically, we had a second house in that subdivision, and we knew that nothing would ever get built in that area. We would have never dreamed a parking lot would be there, or we wouldn't have bought there.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Beekler, I'm Grand Page Road. I was wondering-
Say your name again.
Ellen Beekler. I was just wondering who, why, why, why do we need a dog park there? Who wants it? Who asked for it? And why bring it up?
At the annual meeting, there was one person that asked for it to be discussed.
Who was that?
Tom.
It was at the town's annual meeting, so it was a town resident.
So, we're talking about one resident asked for this, and we have how many residents sitting here that are extremely against it? We also live, everybody in here is backed up to this.
Wait. Are you done, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Are you done?
Well, we'll all kind of get together, so I'm sure everything will get up.
I didn't want you to be interrupted. Okay, sir.
I'm sorry. It's hard for me to discuss stuff like this without it raising emotions, obviously, because of all things that Karen said. I already stated who I was, Mike McKenna. I live three doors down from Karen, I live right next to Brian, and I live a few doors down from George. We all live on the same street there, all our backyards backed up to this. I have one house in back of me, in the back of us, but my whole side yard is open to that, and you can see the whole thing. And we also have an animal, we have a dog, we have two animals that we are also deed restricted to, and we cannot have any fences or anything like that. And I can safely say that my dog would be barking at that constantly. I mean, that would be a huge issue for us.
A big distraction for those of us that do have dogs.
You know, and like Karen said, except we didn't, you know, we wouldn't have bought our house next to a dog park. You know, and there's already a giant dog park two miles down the road at Pleasant Springs. So, if people are gonna have to drive to this dog park, I'm sure they could figure out the next two miles to get to the dog park that already exists. I mean, and I, I don't believe the land has been properly taken care of in the past. I mean, the fencing has all fallen down, everything's all overgrown. Right now, one of the vent stacks that is supposed to be venting the methane out of the landfill has been tipped over for I don't know how long, and I would think that would be something, you know, if we were taking care of this property, that stuff like that would be, stuff we'd be looking at, you know, right away. I mean, because before, we all had to come down here about the methane that could be potentially vented into our basement because of it. So that's why you put the vent pipes in, and now one of them's bleeding over, and doesn't even look like it's operating or anything. So, my, also my concern would be, you know, the longevity of this, and, you know, who's taking care of this? Who's gonna be responsible for cleanup? You know, and in the past, I'm sorry, but the village and the town haven't always been real agreeable on everything together. So, you know, another joint venture on something that, you know, in the future, are we gonna have problems with who's responsible for maintenance, who's responsible for cleanup, and who's paying for all this? And it comes down to this lady's question, that I'm very sorry that I interrupted you, that, you know, who asked for this? None of us asked for this, and we're the people that live in the area and in the neighborhood, and I think that should be in their biggest consideration. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you.
P. on 3660 Grand Page Road. Except for Eileen, everybody has dogs at Grand Page Road in Maxwell. The people that live directly behind Mike have two dogs, and people across from those people have a dog. So you're talking, everybody's got a dog. We do just fine walking in around the neighborhood. We don't need those, anybody bringing dogs in the neighborhood. You know, and the big concern from us, we're already concerned when people stop on Nat Big for whatever reason. It's not a, you know, we always keep an eye out for car back there, you know, there's weird activity back there. And you don't know what they're doing back there. Hopefully, they're talking on the cell phone, but you know about. And then you're gonna have a parking lot with a bunch of who knows what, parking lots. It's an imitation that someone gives, some adults, too. We also feel, like Karen said, because we like the darkness back there, we don't, you know, the street lights, we don't want them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. Casey Erlinson, I'm from Crest Haven, which I think is the town. I'm relatively new resident.
Can you say your name again?
Casey Erlinson. Give me the spell.
I'll figure it out.
Okay. I certainly, I'm in favor of dog park, not necessarily the specific location, which I'm learning is, seems pretty objectional, objectionable, and I don't disagree with any of that. I wouldn't want it, you know, that near my house or anything either. But myself and my neighbors, a lot of us do have dogs, and we do, if I walk in, so on, but dog park is, it's something really good for dogs to socialize and get together and be able to run around off-leash and so on. It's something we would like, but I agree that it should be in a, you know, more desirable location, away from people's houses. I don't know where that might be, unfortunately. I do know also, so, right now, a couple that we've gone to, from the east side of Madison, there's one in Monona that is maybe an acre or two, so they don't have to be huge, and it's just a square fenced-in area. There isn't a parking lot per se, that is more of a, in a commercial area. But, yeah, I didn't want to register, I'm in favor of it, but I certainly don't want to ruin anyone's property values, but it's something people in the community do want in some regard.
Thank you. Danielle.
Danielle Williams. I live in the village of Cottage Grove. I also came out to support the concept of a dog park. I think it's something our community could really benefit from, and I was really happy to see that it's something the town and village would be willing to do together, because, you know, it would be something that would serve both communities, so it makes sense that you would both come together to work on this. I have two adopted lab mixes who have lots of energy, and while I walk them twice a day, it would be great to have a park that they could visit and run around without me having to run with them. But, so I primarily come to support that, but I also think dog parks are a great opportunity for community members to come and get to know one another. When we first got Howie, and he was a puppy, we were living in a downtown condo and had a pretty small dog park there, but as everyone has their routines, you come, get to know your neighbors around the same time, and people of all ages, backgrounds, have dogs, so, you know, it might be family of kids, seniors, everyone in between, and you can talk about what's going on in the community, different events, volunteer opportunities.
You're taking over for it.
So, I think it's definitely something that our community could benefit from. However, again, I'm not very familiar with what the landscape is like, and depending on the size and any sort of trees or landscaping that could help, I mean, any of that could certainly benefit, to make sure that they're not impacting property values. If this isn't the right location, I certainly would hope you keep the discussion going and find another thing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris Bigberg, Grand Page Road. I'll go back to the notes from 2007, which Karen was kind of forward to. A lot of these people had concerns at that time, had the same concerns of where it sounds tonight from all the neighbors I'm hearing. Nothing has been done that I know to resolve any of those concerns, and on September of 2007, September 24th, the minutes of the meeting say, the proposal should be tabled until others have it located. Has that happened? Has that been investigated at all?
No site has been found in the township.
Because it looks as if we had a lot of objection back in 2007, with residents are all still here with those concerns, and I heard a few more tonight besides the one that I noted in the notes from 2007, and at that time, decided we should look for some other sites. And I don't know why we're rehashing this again, I guess.
Those are the same site in 2007?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we're kind of-
We're disappointed that this is-
Unless, why we're here again.
Danielle.
I know it's appropriate to ask a question, but about what other proposals for the landfill would be, if there's other ways to bring natural landscaping or trying to help with the site.
You don't plant anything on a landfill other than grass because of, you don't want it penetrating the cap, so there would be no landscaping on it.
The county has talked about doing native plantings and grasses and trails and some of the things that we planted, so I think that would be something where it'd become more of a park instead, like a recreational park.
With a parky, my friend? So, we're back on the same thing, would I want dogs or all these other?
Not necessarily public access, but if there's a, our nature.
There's initially a park right behind, right on the other side.
Right.
Danielle, how does the Dane County, she works for Dane County, she was our rep for Dane County for us here, I don't know if you know that, any of you? She was our rep, now she works for Joe Parisi, and my thing right off the bat was always, well, who's gonna pay for this? You know? I don't, everybody in Cottage Grove doesn't have a dog, you know, or even wants to, like you people don't, you know, you're against it having it there, and I'm about money besides, and I wouldn't want to have it there either, if I lived there. So, and it did come up, and that's the reason we're having this tonight, so you people can be here to vent whatever you feel is wrong. No decisions have been made on a thing, nothing, so. But, in my case, I just, I'm not for it. But my point was, what, where does Dane County fit in here? Do they pay for it? Do they run it? These are the questions that need to be brought up. Does Sun Prairie run theirs? In Sun Prairie, does Stoughton run theirs?
Well, there are-
I don't think they do.
There are certain that are county parks.
The county does.
But there are also municipalities, Madison, Sun Prairie, they each run their own park systems as well, and then I would assume they pay for their dog parks through the same park funds.
I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, I mean, just like the town has its parks, and you pay for those maintenance.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Wedsteins, and I live on Nat Big Road, just several houses down from the intersection of Maxwell and Nat Big. And I'm concerned about a potential parking lot that would likely be installed for this dog park. There's a lot of traffic on Nat Big, more than what you'd think of, and I do have, now I have just one dog, I previously had two, but I walk my dog on the leash regularly down Nat Big Road and then some of the other areas, and there is a lot of construction traffic that's been added of late, farm tractors and farm equipment, and I would be concerned about the safety of not only people, as well as the dogs, that would possibly use this dog park, especially if dogs break away from their owners, and then the barking. There are several homeowners immediately in my, around, surrounding my house that have dogs, and I know that would be an added concern by having this dog park and causing our own pets return and barking because of the behavior. But especially against the added traffic of having people park there and possibly then walking away from the park itself down a nice level road such as Nat Big is. And right now, there is already a lot of activity there, and I've called the Sheriff's Department a number of times since I've moved in, and that's been about, well, four years ago, at least, actually. There have been some homemade fireworks left on a field turn-in just down from where my house is that were unexploded. I can't remember if that was last year or the year before that I called in about that, that people of whatever ages come and they dump stuff, trash, unmentionable things, you know, it's a real concern for me to add that factor of additional people coming and parking, and then, you know, moving up and down Nat Big Road from what I already experienced and likely would be added to by having this kind of a park. So, I'm in favor of dog parks, but not in this situation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe, this is Dana King, I'm in the town. It does seem like in the town, the properties are bigger, and so maybe they need, as per individuals, it's less to have a place to run your dog. In the village, certainly seems like a lot of the properties don't have a place where they can do that. One place to maybe talk to Dane County about would be McCarthy Park, because that's a pretty good-sized park.
You can take dogs there, but they're not off-leash.
Right, so if there was an area in there that was fenced, then it already has parking facilities, and it's already a place where you can take dogs.
The board's wish to do anything? Continue talking, drop it?
Well, I, me personally, I was, you know, I'm a cat person, so I don't have a dog, so I don't have to worry about barking or anything. But, that being said, I do think the landfill is much too small to put a dog park there, especially when you consider the fact that all the neighbors are definitely against it. And there, again, like Mike said, who's gonna pay for it? Because we certainly don't have the funds to pay for it ourselves.
Just a note, we do have in our long-range plan, a dog park penciled in. That doesn't mean it's gonna be built in the next 10 years or ever, but it's in the plan, anyway. Right behind- Right behind the Wisconsin Bank and Trust between that and the school, that land there. So that is in the long-range plan, but, you know, long range.
Right. Well, there we are.
There we go.
Is it possible to do some kind of fundraiser or something for the other dog park? I mean...
Well, it'll be up to the developer. It's not, it's in private hands right now, but...
How much money are they talking about?
Well, when the land gets developed, they'll have to, we'll have to take parkland from them. And we will take that land from them when they develop the lots. So whether it's apartments or whatever it gets developed as, we'd kind of like it to be commercial. But we will see how it gets developed. We don't, the village doesn't own that land, so we can't decide what is built there. All we can say is, no, you can't build that there. We can't tell them what to build there. So, yeah. Hi.
My name's Brian Swolz. I live on 3652 Rampage Road. My backyard does cut up to the landfill. I guess my biggest question, after a lot of people, a lot of my neighbors have already kind of stated everything and how I feel of why I'm also against having a dog park there, is at what point will be where we won't be called back here any year again, going through the same topic?
Do we meet again in 2028?
Right, I thought it was already done, but we're back here again.
Well, but that's the whole, that's the whole point of when we have our annual meeting. That's for the town residents to bring an item up. They brought the item up. We said we'd ask about it.
How many here were at the town meeting? Raise your hands. Nobody.
I was.
I was.
So, you know, for, but for, but what I'm saying is that that person wanted us... That person wanted us to explore having a dog park, so we explored it. I mean, it's just, it's just a process that we have to go through.
I do realize that, but I thought we ended it that it was going to be in a different location the last time, and that should have been in the minutes.
Well, I wasn't serving on the board back then.
So do you think...
Minutes aren't saved, discussion topics?
It's in our packet. Is the, would the landfill committee be the spot that would discuss further spots? Probably not, because it won't be on the landfill, apparently.
Parks and Rec.
But then, and the Parks and Rec committee would be the area where that would get discussed, whether it be the village or the town at that point. And our Parks and Rec meets on, when does it meet? Wednesdays, Thursdays?
It's Thursdays and at 6:30, the fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday. But we don't have any, any, any place where we could put a dog park in the village at this time.
I just want to make one last comment. It is frustrating when Chris read the minutes that in '07, the township said it was too small. We'll watch for something else. I feel like the township should have our backs a little bit on it for as much taxes as we pay. That if we, if I wouldn't have gotten notified or kept on top of it on emailing Kim on what's going on, we wouldn't have been notified. We should have got something to say.
I would have, I definitely would have notified you, everybody, if it went back past tonight. I sort of felt like tonight they were going to decide if this was even going to be something they wanted to pursue. They weren't going to decide on a dog park tonight. There's a lot more to it than that. And so I notified you because you had personally contacted me.
Yes, yes.
I thought if it goes beyond that, then I will take the step of notifying everybody on that petition from years ago and everything. I didn't do it this time.
Okay, well, no, that's good. No, that makes me feel better that we would have been notified. And then my other question is, years ago, I had actually asked the board to remove that fencing, that it was eyesore. And, you know, because to us, to me, when I look out the window, there's so many bushes there now. I see more like a field. I look out and it's, to me, I don't even think of a landfill after all these years. I think of it as a field. And back then, they said if people, the reason they left it up, because they don't want it disrupted. They don't want people walking on it or going on it. So why is it so different now to then, where it's okay to maybe park cars on it now or have people walk with dogs? Or why is it so different?
Nobody's ever said that we would park cars on it.
Okay, now wait a minute. In '07, it was first brought up, okay, let's park cars in the ditch. Now I heard, and I can't specifically tell you who, that it possibly would be included a parking lot. And I'd have to look back on my...
The parking lot would have to go on the five acres that we own to the south of it. That's not part of the landfill, but we have the monitoring wells out there.
Okay.
It could go there. It can't go on the landfill.
So we're talking even huger than, I mean, you're talking about a parking lot down as you go down farther in this whole area. So this is way bigger than I would even imagine that you would do. So, yeah, I just really hope that everybody considers us neighbors on this.
Motion to table it?
Second.
I guess we have to act separately, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Should the village...
For the village, I guess there's been a motion by James and second by Melissa to table the dog park discussion. Any other discussion from village members?
Should we not motion to table this? Should we just finish this off?
Just finish it off.
Well, I mean, if it doesn't come up in the next meeting, then it's dead anyway.
A motion to table it is just going to delay it. It's just going to delay it.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion. No, that is actually a motion.
All right, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Second.
So my motion then would be to not consider any future dog park on the Nat Big landfill area in perpetuity.
I'll second. There you go.
Motion by John and second, take it as by Troy. To not consider a dog park on the Nat Big landfill area in perpetuity. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? For the village, motion?
Yep, I make the same motion for the town.
I'll second.
Is there a motion and a second to copy the motion from the village? Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Who seconded it?
Kristi.
Williams.
Yeah, they're Williams.
Yeah, they're Williams. It could be like a law firm there.
Not the Williams on the audience.
The Williams is so common.
All right, the next item was...
We've heard his music for John Williams.
I'd like to thank everyone, but I, Kim, I do want to thank you. Appreciate you emailing me, and I do believe that you would have notified us if this went further. So thank you for that.
Potential cooperative improvements to Bakken.
Do you want to even step in this hole?
I think a dog park.
Take over the rugby fields, yeah.
Give them something to run for.
No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry.
Hey.
Are you a little worked up?
Yeah, I know you do. Yeah, that's okay. This is, isn't this a big decision-making thing here today? It's just a town and a village discussion.
I have a caddio on my basket.
They got me up hurt somewhere?
Thank you, sir.
The cats could run one.
No.
I have a caddio.
A caddio.
It may have came from the village.
Okay, well, they're pretty resourceful. They can climb anything. Oh, there you go.
All right, so 5B is potential cooperative improvements to Bakken Park. I, if that came from the village, I'm not aware of that.
It's not on the email that we had previously. I don't know either.
From their last meeting?
It was an email that I got from the village. I thought it was Jack, but maybe who else would have emailed me about that agenda?
Could have been Erin, or I don't know.
No, it was either you or Lisa, because that's really who I get emails from.
Okay.
What kind of improvements are you looking at, doing that?
At Bakken?
Well, I think at the last board meeting, because you weren't there. I think it had been brought up that you guys had wanted to talk about it, but we didn't. From what I remember, we didn't want to.
We didn't have any specific improvements.
No, I think part of it was just about the bike path, wasn't it? We were just talking a little bit about the bike path.
Cooperating on improvements to the El Margot Park, is it? If there, when the village develops that public annexation land.
Right.
Yeah, we talked about that the last time.
Yeah, not Bakken Park, it would be huddled up.
So.
This might have been, like Mike said, about the bike path, but that's not going to happen in the next couple of years.
Yeah, it's a bit of a while.
So a motion to table?
Sure. Go for it. I'll second it.
All right, motion by Melissa and second by James from the village to table 5B. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention?
I motion the town tables this as well.
Second.
Motion and a second to table. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same say. Motion carry. Discuss to consider overage on cost to repay the emergency service building parking lot. Jude, you want to tell us what?
Well, I have some concerns on the park parking lot that was discussed. And I noticed after the first rainfall that there was pooling on the blacktop there, which I guess, talk to Dan, they've got that draining better. I would be concerned if water does pool there, especially with the way the trucks, that will break down quickly. So just to maintain that is one issue. They did come back and rewind in front of the doors this last week. They didn't do the back doors. I guess we don't have to have the lines there. But one of the things with Wolf was they were supposedly had like an aerial shot, mocked what we had before. One of the concerns is the majority of our staff has pickup trucks. And if you were to go and park a pickup truck there in the lines, you'd have like six inches between vehicles. And they did not match the lines that were there, because you can still see the lines on the curb, the, you know, concrete portion.
Next to the building.
Yeah, and if you actually follow them down, if you were to go over there, the last spot is like a motorcycle spot. Maybe a little wider, maybe a Mini Cooper or something would fit there. But they didn't, you know what I mean, they just didn't leave any room, and they definitely didn't do the lines that were there before. So if we come in and we line up together, we're not going to be able to get out with trucks. That's what it comes down to. Not to be picky, but you know what I mean? There is no room. Then they didn't match what was there. So how do you fix that now? Paint over in black and redo it? I don't know if that's the answer that, you know. So otherwise, they did a nice job. I mean, thank the town, the cooperation on letting us use the old fire station. That worked out extremely well. Dan and his team helped out. That was tremendous and, you know, otherwise it looked good.
Well, did we not have anybody there to watch them stripe the lot or what?
No, probably not.
No? So they just do what they want to do?
Well, like you said, they had the aerial, they should have followed that.
And like I said, you can actually see on the curb over there in spots where the lines kind of were. Not everyone, but you can get an idea that... So again, I just bring it up because it's going to be tight. We're going to end up parking all over the place, because we're not going to be able to park next to each other.
We'll be talking to them, I'm sure, so that'll be another item to bring up.
Just mention it for...
Is there any concern with the quality of the blacktop and the heavy trucks? I mean, is that really thick enough, done, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so what we did, and I don't know if you're aware, in front of the bay doors and the front side, they went with five inch.
Okay.
Five and a half.
It ended up being about five and a half. And then it tapers down a little bit toward when you're exiting, but it's enough for the trucks.
Okay.
So we're pretty careful otherwise. I mean, sometimes the ladder does come around the backside.
Sure.
But it's a pretty easy turn with that. Otherwise, the only other thing back there is engine four and the squad goes through the back doors. The big concern would be out front.
Okay. Do you want the lines on the back doors? If they come back and paint them, I would say.
It wouldn't hurt. I mean, it's like, why do you need lines to go in the doors? It's a guide. Those trucks are big. If you've never sat in them, they're big. Lines out.
And they don't drive those trucks every day.
Yeah, most of them don't.
Right. Not done. Okay. JJ had that ordered. JJ Larson was taking care of replacing that.
Okay.
So I'm not sure...
Okay, I can follow up with him.
When it's supposed to be installed, but he, he was taking care of it. He told me.
Okay, I can follow up with him.
Okay. So we had an overage on the estimate.
I'm alive, it looks like.
Yeah, it was...
261, dollars?
Well...
16,990.
My, my concern is that, and we did discuss this at our meeting, town meeting, is two companies bid. One company actually had about the same amount as the excess to the company that got the bid. So here you got a company that did it right and a company that bid it wrong. They got the contract and now, in a way, thinking that we should like pay for this? Now what happens the next time we need a job? Are they going to underbid again and then, ah geez, we're $128 million over tons? And everybody's going to say, oh yeah, okay, gee, that's great, you know? So the other, other companies sort of got screwed, really, in my opinion. Yeah.
I think it'd be one thing if one company had different specifications. But everything I'm hearing is everybody had the same specifications to bid. So how is this our problem versus their problem?
The other thing that I was questioning too is if the other contract included the side road or not? Because that was an additional expense too.
When we originally bid it, it stopped at the driveway.
So they were both apples or apples?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The $16,000 overage, 17, didn't include that driveway. That was a whole separate thing. One of the companies that did that is one of my customers through Landmark. I was actually there today, and I brought it up in discussion because, you know, again, they would have been a great company to handle that lot. And they were a company that was about the same difference. And their bid included five inch in the front, five inch in the back, and five inch along the first row here. And they were equal dollar amounts. And I'll be honest, I didn't pursue it because of the big difference, but this is why. I don't think, I think you guys like this. I mean, when I talk to that company, I mean, they got to assume some responsibility. If they didn't measure correctly or one of their devices didn't measure correctly, which is what I'm kind of understanding, how does that fall on you? I know it's an estimate, but an overage of $17,000, that's a 25% increase or so. That's ridiculous.
And my point is, most, most companies that do business have errors and omissions insurance.
Right.
So, you know, do we just say, hey, we want to know what your policy is? Your insurance policy?
If they've made an error in the other direction, would they be refunding us?
Fat chance.
So I don't see any reason.
Well, the last conversation I had with them, and they admit that they made the mistake, that it was their fault. What they would be willing to do is split the $17,000, call it. If we would pay the 85, they would eat the other 85. And they'd be willing to either bill us this year or bill us in '19 when we could budget for it. And in '19, we would have another, we would be putting $14,000 in that fund.
And again, that would be split three ways then, or is that...
No, that's just between two of us, so we'd each have 4250.
Okay.
Or else we take it out of that fund in '19.
Okay.
Would be the options.
So they screw up and then the taxpayer pays for it, half of it. Their screw up.
It doesn't even sound like they did a very good job.
No, I mean, I'm fine with fighting it, but again, you got some comments in the audience too, so.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. I understand. Sure.
It almost sounds like your word screw up, if you put the word fraud in there, it works also. And that's what you do with lawsuits.
Well, I think their estimate was pretty poorly done, is what, what happened there. And they were the low bid, so, you know, yeah, okay, well, that's, we take them.
And both of the town and village used them this year for other jobs.
Well, yeah, sure.
And they do, okay.
And we had no problems.
And you'd think a parking lot would be, to me, would be pretty easy to do.
Pretty straightforward.
And it's, it's a large company too that we're dealing with, not a little man pa that would have to subsidize. Yeah.
So they're, they're coming to us... So, they're coming to us and bargaining with us.
Yeah, right.
So, if they're willing to pay the eight, they're probably willing to pay the sixteen, in my opinion. And probably get it from their insurance company.
Maybe we start with telling them no thank you and see where that goes.
Well.
Have we paid them? We paid them. See, we haven't even paid them yet.
I don't think we've paid them anything yet.
Let's see.
Thoughts from village members on this?
I'd say pay them the amount the bid was and.
I agree. Let the insurance company handle it from there.
I agree with Mike.
Fine with that.
I just hope to see how this is our problem. They had all due for me.
It's not our circus, not our monkey.
But if you're going to consider having them restripe, that would be that before you pay.
Give them an extra fifty bucks for that.
Can we ask them to restripe and whatever and say if they do that right the second time, maybe you'll consider a part of the overage or something?
Yeah.
That's an option too.
They can see this, we want to.
House will be on the ground.
It's not like we aren't customers. So, it's if they want to keep us happy too.
So, it's a discuss and consider items. We need two separate motions again, is it?
Yeah, something so we can probably get back to them and tell them what.
I move that the town pays the original bid and leaves the overage up to the insurance company.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Their insurance company.
Their insurance company.
Their insurance. Pay our, what we were bid, leave everything else up to them to eat. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
We'll make the same motion for the village.
Okay. And Troy, you second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by John Williams, second by Troy, to duplicate the town motion to pay the original bid and leave it at that. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, there you go.
One thing on that side part, did they ever do an invoice or quote on that?
The driveway, over there, yeah.
They're going to come back for more on that one too.
That was a separate thing, okay.
Yeah. Discuss and consider economic development and study for the chamber on branding.
I think somebody's here to talk about that.
At least a couple of people, I think.
Oh, you are. Who's going to tell us?
Do you have a copies?
We do, yeah, locally, yeah.
And I think we've had, both boards have had presentations.
Yeah, we had a presentation a while back and.
This is more about, or at least from my perspective, more about directing staff to work on this, maybe create a subcommittee to work on this in order to really put forth and utilize this study for economic development for the whole of Cottage Grove. There's got to be some legs with this, I would hope, based on the presentations that we had seen, at least to give it a shot. Because certainly, we, both communities certainly would like that overall, it's an overall view of Cottage Grove anyway. So, that's Mike.
Yeah, so, my name's John Lawford, Chamber President. This is Mike Milich, who is the past Chamber President, I was for number three. Mike really spearheaded this with UW extensions, along with Paula. And I know it has a lot of history, so I'll have Mike talk a little bit about maybe some of the history of, you know, why we've done this and what the goal is.
Yeah, thanks, John. So, I came before the town board and the village board, probably about a year and a half ago, talking about what this project really was and the point of it and why I thought it was a good thing for our communities to jointly invest in. It's completed and back then, what the goal was is we were actually the first community in Wisconsin that UW extension did a branding study with. And the point was really for us and residents of Cottage Grove, both town and village, to start thinking about what is Cottage Grove and where do we want Cottage Grove to go from here? And it's not a campaign in itself, but what it does is it kind of forms the bedrocks for how we move forward, marketing ourselves, and also kind of sharing with our residents, both town and village, you know, what is the future of Cottage Grove and what are some of the real advantages and what differentiates us? What makes Cottage Grove different than Stoughton or McFarland or Wanakee? So, I was really pleased with the joint cooperation and funding this. So, thank you to the village and town for doing this. And I was pleased with the participation. So, do you want to touch on some of the results of this or where did you want to?
Yeah, so the overall theme of why people, what people think about when they think of Cottage Grove, whether it's the village, the town, number one is I think people really think of Cottage Grove as Cottage Grove. And what's most important about our community is that it's the quality of life. You know, people are friendly here, people trust one another, they get along, they know each other. And, you know, that's really why people like being a part of this community. And of course, you know, we've got, you know, the school district, we've got, you know, restaurants, we've got, you know, new businesses coming in, that's great, but at the end of the day, it's really the quality of life that, why people feel so good here.
And if you take a look at some of the survey results, one of the things that I think is most telling from an economic development standpoint is the three things that village and town residents said they do the most on a daily basis is spend time with family, spend time with neighbors and friends, and actually, the third was go out to eat at restaurants. But anything that we're doing, I think collaboratively as Cottage Grove should be supporting those three things for our residents. So, when we're looking at future developments or future projects of parks or any type of development, I think those three things should be kept in mind. That's what residents do. And as a president of the chamber for three years, that's one of the things I heard a lot is we want more things to do with our friends and family in Cottage Grove. So, I think this reinforced that and I think it can provide a springboard to messaging that, both internally and externally.
So, I mean, they provided a couple of different logos. You know, if we wanted to, you know, work together, that really, you know, puts Cottage Grove on the map, it really helps identify us. So, there's a couple of logos that they had used for samples.
It looks like it.
I think it's just Cottage Grove here, but this one's village and town.
Okay.
And then they've got that there. Additionally, you know, there was a recommendation that if you had a collective website that really had the three units, you know, collectively working together, communicating, you know, tell us about Cottage Grove, what is it? You know, why Cottage Grove? You know, there's a website recommendation as well that I think, you know, it's like, do I go to the village website, do I go to the town? This is a place where they can go and get collective information because of community.
One of the things, this will probably be the least about what you'll hear me talk ever. One of the things we actually talked about at the chamber meeting today was the fact of the leakage that we have and the money that leaks Cottage Grove and goes into maps. And there are two things that I think would really help us capture those dollars back. One, John touched on the quality of life. So, things that we can have for families to do and stay here rather than going outside of Cottage Grove. But the second really is a diversification of businesses and our business base. So, somebody said today at our chamber meeting, I can't buy a pair of jeans in Cottage Grove, right? And we all know that to some extent. A lot of families with young children in the village have to go to Target for school supplies and, you know, kids clothes and such. And obviously, when they go to Target, then they go out to eat, maybe they go to Hy-Vee, they're going to other places. Now, please, please hear me, I'm not advocating to bring the Target to Cottage Grove. However, looking at some of those different opportunities, I think to bring in businesses that we don't already have in either the town or the village helps us give another reason for people to stay here. So, whatever that looks like, different restaurant opportunities, different recreation opportunities, and then other things, I mean, we're blessed. We've got the village and the town, and the town has the capacity for bigger projects, right? Advanced manufacturing projects, different industrial things, park space, you know, so we've got all of these different options. And I guess my hope is that just the conversation between the two boards is what can we kind of all do together to kind of hit some of these goals? You know, so that's something we're talking about the chamber, that will help our existing businesses grow and thrive. I think it'll help us capture more dollars and hopefully more tax base to take the burden off the residents, so.
Okay, so, when you say that though, what do you mean? I mean, I, what did you guys come up with for what business we actually do need here? The hotel, for one, I would hope.
So, Mike, maybe I'll answer that a little bit. So, I think, I think kind of the first theme of this was kind of going from, you know, there's kind of two ways you can grow. You can grow with what comes in and says, I want to be here, right? And that goes back to we can say no, right? Or you start kind of defining who do you want to be? And that's probably what your question is, is how do you determine what businesses exactly? And while I don't think the chamber gets into exactly like saying this business should come here or not, because I don't think that's really our role, I think it's to really advocate for businesses that support what the residents are saying is important to them. You know, again, like things where they can go spend time together with their friends and family, things that'll keep families in Cottage Grove instead of going to Sun Prairie or McFarland on the weekends and then spending money at the McFarland places. So, we talk about things like destinations. That would be something that would be attractive to Cottage Grove, whether that might be like a Wisconsin brewing company in Verona, for example. I guess it's along those ideas and how to start branding ourselves to those groups that would then be interested in coming to Cottage Grove is kind of the goal of this.
So, what are you thinking then? No, I'm just kidding. That was a joke.
I want Taco Bell. I don't know if that's here nor there, so.
Just a few more thousand people.
Yeah, that's right. I'll drive my car up.
So, do we try and build on maybe the rugby that we have here that's growing?
That's certainly fun. I know that's something that's been discussed. And I know that there are plans to, you know, build and to increase awareness of rugby and help that be a destination, help really put Cottage Grove on the map of why people should be here from the outside, why come here? I think what Mike's, and just real quick, what Mike's saying also is that, you know, the residents have spoken, so to speak, and this is what they're saying, their view and their feelings of Cottage Grove. So, how do we help attract and, you know, bring in businesses that will help them feel this way in our four walls in Cottage Grove? And then what can we do to attract other people outside into our community?
I would add, one thing that the chamber is starting to work on is also the people that come and work in our community during the day and capturing those people and help them feel at home. So, when Summit opens, there's going to be three hundred employees coming from all around Dane County and the surrounding counties. How do we help them come and use our chiropractors and our dentists and our doctors when they're here, eat at our restaurants and patronize our businesses? And so, that's one of the things that we are kind of undertaking as a chamber right now to welcome those folks in too. So, we've got opportunity with a lot of those people. You mentioned rugby. Saturday is the community rugby day. I don't know if anybody has seen that. Rugby wants to be involved and do more. And what I've said to them is I go to a game and I don't know what the heck is going on, right? And so, they are going to have rugby.
Saturday, they're going to teach you.
They're going to teach you. They're going to have rugby ambassadors. It's going to be awesome. But they're an untapped gem and they're hosting the Big Ten Championship and these national tournaments. They have hurling. I didn't even know what hurling was until like a couple of weeks ago. But they're looking at more uses for their field, so I think that's going to be huge. When you guys in the village talk about Bakken Park, you really got some opportunity there and even going into the township. You know, there's a lot of, with the bike trail, it's going to be great. I'm excited. So, how do we capitalize on that? And then when those people come for those events, obviously, a hotel is something that we're talking about looking into. But what are those other things that they could use? And then where do we put them? You know, do we put a hotel somewhere in the township in that direction? Do we look at trying to recruit a hotel and put it by Commerce Park? I mean, those are conversations we're hoping that you all are having together. And then we will be your third party cheerleader with whatever direction that goes, so.
Yeah, one of my big problems is in the military, I dealt with this in the state, you know, with building, buildings, and it seemed like always, everything, when we would build a five million or six million dollar building, the community would always try to give us a piece of property that was useless out in the middle of nowhere where nobody would even see it. And I sort of look at, and don't get me wrong, I think Bakken Park is great, but anybody, any tourist that comes here is never going to see it when they're driving through town. It's good for the people that live here already and it's good for somebody when they finally get here, but when people come through here, a lot of the good things we have, nobody sees. And I really think that's a problem, I really do. Do you get what I'm saying? You know, nothing's on a main drag. It's off on Vilas Hope Road and the Dream Park is great, but I'll bet you half the people in this community don't even know it's there.
So, there's enough for you guys to discuss together when you're both working on your master plans and your comprehensive plans, is keeping those things in mind, that we do kind of have those challenges. So, where are places that people would be open to parks and different things of that nature that are highly visible?
Well, to your point, Mike, I think I agree with you. And I think there's an opportunity in Cottage Grove between the Bakken Park, Clark Street, into the Houston Development Corridor. A lot of things with some of your more senior residents, they talk a lot about like walkable retail, walkable, where can I walk to where I can listen to some music, maybe stop in and get a bite to eat. I think long term in Cottage Grove with the bike trail going through there and the continued development of Bakken Park with rugby and Fireman's Park, there's a real opportunity through that corridor to create something that is more along those lines, but that takes a lot of planning, long range planning, you know, for something like that. So, there are opportunities, it just takes, I think all this, what we've learned through this process or I've learned is that it takes a lot of us all working together, you know, understanding that we're all going to have our opinions, but just saying, here's the greater goal and we need to be top of mind on some of these things, so.
Well, that's why we're meeting together, which we haven't done for a lot of years. So, we do become a, even though we're town and village, we still are the community of Cottage Grove. And we all look for the same good things, but not shafting each other, okay? That's what we're here for, right?
And the chamber wants to be a part of the process, wants to be a part of, you know, the joint efforts here. You know, we want to help.
I think you have. I think you're doing great stuff.
I applaud the chamber for what they're doing, what you're trying to do and keep it up, truly.
Does anybody have any other questions about this or what the next kind of, John, you're going to get?
Signage is an issue. I mean, as it came up here, you have good things, nobody knows how to find Bakken Park. Has there ever been any discussion about signage? You know, what is Bakken Park? And this might be something to do jointly, to talk about. I mean, they're never going to know, it's never going to be celebrated unless you see it. And if you're biking through town and see something, you know, then you'll at least ask a question at the bar of wherever you find it.
We have the ride, obviously, the ride. I helped with the tents that were out there last weekend, the Sunday. And I had a couple of employees where I work that came to help and they're like, wow, this park is really nice, I didn't know that was here. So, to your point, they don't know. But once they find it, they're like, wow, this is.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So, I agree.
I mean, is signage something we want to consider as an effort to build on? Chamber, the village and the town together?
Why not?
Yeah, did the, where is the signs currently? Like sometimes there are signs pointing like on a main street.
I don't know if any.
I don't think there is anything.
The other thing too.
Before I joined the park community, I didn't know what Bakken Park was. I'd never heard of it. I didn't know what it was called, yeah.
And rugby might be a part of that conversation too.
Well, we get. Well, we get three great golf courses besides.
Yeah, I think the rugby is just like a diamond in the rough for us. I really think that we have to capitalize on them and making them feel welcome here, especially with the tournaments and, you know, like, well, you know, she even said, you know, they get national groups here. I mean, this is a nationwide place to be for rugby. I mean, it's, and it's an ideal situation for the town and the village to tap into that resource.
Jeremy Holliday, the president of Wisconsin Rugby Club, is going to be at our village board meeting in the 18th of October, so.
And the thing is, where do they go at night? They go to a hotel in Monona or in Madison. They leave here, leave the community and go somewhere else.
So, just one final thought about the brand book too. This is actually designed in such a way that if you are sitting down with a developer, where you would flip it open, kind of like a picture book, like you're telling the picture. So, the way this is designed is for you as a municipality, so when you have an interested party, this is your talking piece, right? This is what it's supposed to do. So, however you are looking to market yourselves, you know, as a town, the village, whatever, you know, utilize it, please. If it's something where you guys say, "You know what? We'd like to have a stack of printed copies. You know, let's work on that and see what that costs and do that." Obviously, it can be electronic. But really, this was supposed to be kind of just the starting point of whatever your marketing efforts are going to be. All the stuff a potential developer needs are in there. Demographics, statistics, commute times, who we are, what we already have to offer. So, it's your tool. Use it however you want. I mean, you help pay for it, so please use it. I just don't want it to sit on a shelf. That doesn't do it any good for any of us, so.
Is this completed now?
It is. I did send you kind of our last draft. We made sure to incorporate a lot more pictures of the township. Our cover page is a picture of the trail because you know what? Best town in the village. And so, you know, we really were mindful and took all of your feedback and tried to pour that into that very last draft. I hope it's the final draft, unless anybody sees any glaring mistakes. Let's call it final, so.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. I really like the signage idea because what Mike was saying, people drive around and they don't see the parks or anything, but if they see a sign, they might go there. So, if you can't take the park to the people, bring the people to the park. And a sign seems like a cheap way to do it. My second idea is, that's where the Badgers play, right?
For rugby?
Rugby Badgers.
I believe so, yeah.
Would it be cool to have a big sign that says, "Home of the Wisconsin Badger Rugby Team"?
They actually got donated one of the Buc-E's, Rugby Bucky is going to be there, but, yeah, it'll be in the rugby area.
In signage too. I mean, then when kids know they're playing, when you see, when I was in high school and I played on the Badger basketball court, you knew you were playing someplace special. So, if you're a high school kid or any kind of kid, knowing you're on a college, first of all, you know it's a good field and you just feel better being there. And it'd be something really cool to, everybody likes the Badgers. And maybe they'd even pay for it. Who knows?
I'm sure there's got to be, because we've got signs for police department and things like that and street poles, I think. We didn't do separate signage. It was on the street poles or something. If you come down in, like for police department, Public Works, maybe it is a separate pole. I don't know.
The BJJ's area.
Yeah. We could do signage. And the thing that comes to mind is like the Gaston School Coffee Shop is able to get their logo on the freeway sign on 94, so if they can do that, Rugby Club, Bakken Park, I mean, you know.
McCarthy Park. Most people wouldn't even go there. They don't, most people don't know if that park is there.
Once the bike trail's done, a lot more people will know where Bakken is.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Take them right there.
They'll have to go through.
For the signage, would you be able to utilize the brand logo that was developed to try to, again, sort of implement that vision of community for us? And maybe signs are there than anywhere you see the logo, would help us redirect the country? And these were just mockups that UW Extension did. If you wanted to have a conversation and have a professional logo design for all of Cottage Grove, it certainly would help us outside of Cottage Grove brand and community. But that's, again, that's another conversation between the two boards because each of you have your own logo, but...
You already have it. We used it on the emergency service building.
Yeah, that's true.
Just continue that.
Yeah, it's consistent. It's a Joshua Tree or something it's called, yeah.
Who's got the JPEG of that?
Do you?
No, I said, "Who has the JPEG"?
What's a JPEG?
Yeah, there you go.
If you can get me to design that sign, that would be helpful. Can I write it down?
Yep.
Have you talked with any of the staff, like the town staff or the village staff about the book at all, like other than just coming to the board meeting?
I'm going to be meeting with Aaron to do that. So, and I'd be happy to talk to whoever you'd like me to talk to, so.
Kim? I don't think we have a whole bunch of staff. We increased your hours, right? So, that's not a problem.
I can talk for hours.
Any other? Any action that we need to take? Let's continue this topic on what future means.
That's, that's the first item on the next agenda. Yeah, table to the next agenda.
Well, but a no-cost, low-cost thing is signs.
Yeah, right.
I mean, just directing where to go. I mean, we're not talking a ton of money there.
It's not going to cost us anything to have Public Works look into where they can put signs.
It's where to go, but it's also a celebration of what we have available that not everybody knows about. And if they know it, they're more inclined to take advantage of.
Okay. Moving on then to discuss and consider results of the recent DNR inspection of the former Naperville landfill. And you have the results. We have a sign that is put up. Dan has already been told to fix the leaning vent. Second time. And the other thing that they had a problem with was the, there were two locks that were missing, so we're going to replace all of the locks with new brass locks, hoping that they will last longer. And the lettering of the well, we decided that we would have them next month come and they would sand the metal, spray paint it, and then use marine-grade stickers, label them so that you know this is GP5 or whatever. So that they would, because they, in the past, just used paint sticks and wears off.
Chris, there was some mention about taking the fence down. That's not an option, I'm assuming?
No, you have to have...
I just wanted to make sure that that was not an option.
And there have been trees marked that will be cut this winter along the fence. And that should satisfy the DNR and bring us back into compliance.
How often does the DNR inspect?
This is the first time that I've seen them there.
Yeah.
Can you, we need to fix any quicker than that.
We needed to put up a sign. We needed new padlocks. We were missing two.
Padlocks?
Padlocks. And the numbering of the test wells.
Of the what?
Test wells had to be identified better. Paint has worn off. Those were the three items.
I think we have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Did I read somewhere where the groundwater flows south?
Southeast.
Southeast from?
The landfill, yes. Yep, that's the natural flow.
Does it go under in at some point or does it just, okay?
Yeah.
And it's rough in the wetlands, eventually down there.
To the east. Yep.
I like what it says here, alleged areas of non-compliance.
Well...
What does that supposed to mean? They don't know what they're talking about or what?
Could be.
No, not the DNR.
I have a question.
Yes.
Carol Westine, you mentioned about some trees will be trimmed or removed from just along the fence.
Yes.
Where they grew in the fence or whatever.
Yeah, they're right next to the fence and they're female box elder trees.
There won't be any trees removed from that drainage area that extends south.
To the south?
Yeah.
Oh, there might be at some point.
We did take trees out of there a couple of years ago.
And we planted some pines and oaks down there. So, as they get bigger, we may weed out some more box elders or less desirable trees that would, because there are a couple oaks in there, hickory and some cherry along with box elder. Yeah. Any other questions on the DNR's inspection? Emergency government agreement.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out what's going on because Troy and I have, we looked at it and then gave it to, Troy took it to the village and I believe it's been in the hands of your lawyer for almost three months now. And it seems like the, what's...
It's been in our attorney's hands for over a year, Mike.
Yeah.
It was June of last year, if I remember correctly. There's two things he'd like to look at. A is the ordinances, to make sure our ordinances follow the state statutes for emergency stuff. He believes we're okay there. The other thing he believes that we need is some sort of a mutual aid agreement so that there's an emergency and us as a village, emergencies in the town, we're not ordering people in the town what to do and...
That's why we, that's why we have the committee though.
It's more complicated, I think, than it really needs to be.
Yeah. But you know, that's why we have the committee.
I'm not an attorney though.
Yeah, and, you know, we're talking about, you know, generally, not a lot of money and the decisions are made, we have a system, as you know, that we monitor all the expenses and everything to make sure that we recoup and so on and so forth. And we've been working with our fire chief and with a few of the other people that are here to ensure we have the people there when, if we do have an event, a problem event that we control the amount of monies. And if we have an emergency, we're going to spend the money. Now, we're going to take and when it's, when the event's over, then we're going to figure out who's going to end up getting reimbursed, so.
We need to track all of the spending. And if it's a natural disaster, presumably FEMA's involved with that, if it's a disaster caused by a business or whatever, then those costs will get shipped back to them.
So, all we need back, we need the ordinance back that we can use for the town and the village.
So, we adopt the same thing.
Yes, and...
Identical.
Other than that, I don't see why we would need an agreement between the two of us. You know, like in a case of emergency, we're going to do the best for the community. So, we need him to get this back.
But if you make him feel better that he wants one, I don't see the harm in one either because we were going to do it anyway.
At the end of the day, we need to make sure that we take care of the situation as is.
Absolutely.
And that's really the, you know, we can make it more complicated than that, but that's...
I can tell you, we're set up to do that today.
Yes.
To address that, I mean, when I came on board as chief, you know, beginning of the year, one of the things that I feel that we were lacking was that EOC movement to, obviously things were outdated. Yes, we've upgraded the technology now. Now, it's moving to the next steps to prep for large situations, you know? We always, you want to prepare for the worst and hope for the best, and we've never done that here. There's nothing to say a tornado is not going to come through here. There's nothing to say that nothing's going to happen at Hydrate someday. Ask Sun Prairie what happened there. It's important. It's definitely important to me. Whether or not I'm chief, I will forever, I think, have my foot in there because I think it's important for the community to make sure we protect them. And you stayed in front of this group. I applaud you for getting together tonight. As one of the few people that has to work with all of you, this is important. It's important to me. Every now and then I put the differences aside. Everybody has an opinion here and as somebody in emergency services, I don't want to look at that. I need everybody to work together and a lot of work together. That's what makes us successful. We talk about a branding study. That's huge and they can see that the town and village are working together. Emergency services, I love to see it, guys. I applaud you guys for getting together. I thank the people that are in EOC, see my drive for that and we're going to continue on that path and also in fire, so making it bigger and better. So, I thank all of you.
You're going over your limit.
I know. I can't help it. I don't know what Lee's concerns are about jurisdictions and such and I think maybe, I know, I'd be willing to chat with him, but in an emergency situation, those directives, I'm coming from necessarily a village rep or a town rep, they're probably going to come from incident command. So, for that to hold up this whole process, I think is unfortunate. And it's just one of those things where, so when I was the chair of EOC, I did all the incident command training. It's all online, right? And I'm sure Lee hasn't and that's okay because not everybody needs to. So, it's just, I think understanding those dynamics will help move that along. One of the things I would love to see, and I went back to the last meeting, just as a citizen, and I intend to continue to go to meetings to help in whatever capacity I can, I would love to see the capacity of that group grow. And I don't know if it has to be official town reps or village reps because I know that's written into the ordinance. But somehow, if we can build a citizen capacity on that group that is willing to go through the ICS training to help, I think that would be huge. Because if you think of a mass situation, you know, a lot of you work outside of Cottage Grove and have other things going on, so to have a bigger pool of people, citizens who are trained and ready to go, I think would be great. And I'm willing to do that as a citizen. I don't need to be appointed to it and have to vote on budgets and such, but I do want to participate. So, I don't know how we can help build that capacity.
Well, I think we're doing it little by little.
Yeah.
You know, and...
We love citizen engagement and we have some meetings where there's a half a dozen people and there's...
The bottom line with emergency government, we are only there for one purpose. And that is that when the fire chief calls and says, "I need 800 sandbags," we're going to try to go, if we don't have it, we're going to go to another level and support him. We're not going to go, "Ah, Jesus Christ, why do you need that?" You know? Because he's the guy on the ground. And he's the guy that needs it. We're going to get it for him. And that's all our function is. There is no other function for emergency government, none, other than supporting the people on the ground. Rest my case.
One thing I did talk with Lee too, and he said that, um, the ordinance itself meets state statutes. The only thing that he is concerned about is does the ordinance conform to what we do when there is an emergency? That's the issue. It, it's more, is what's happening when there is an emergency going to be what the statute or ordinance sets?
Depends on the emergency though, doesn't it?
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't legislate, uh, what to do to turn left if something happens and it's on the right. You know, it's gotta be so, uh, it's, it's gotta be so, uh, wide open that you can make decisions on the spot. You don't go to regulation, go, yeah, geez. We got, this is what we gotta do now, you know? When we're talking emergency, you can't do that.
So that's what the National Incident Management System is, NIMS, and Incident Command System Training. It's all spelled out how this works. And there's different levels. Um, there's a level for citizens. There's a level for fire chiefs. There's a level for city managers. And so there is, those processes are in place already within that framework and that's what they follow in terms of a mass incident. So it doesn't need to be an ordinance because it is a nationwide program.
And does everybody that's in emergency government know that?
Yeah, pretty much. I would say so.
Pretty, pretty much.
And we, I can provide copies.
We go to the state.
And talk to Lee as well, um, you know, in regards to that. We have a lot of that printed material to say, listen, this is how it's spelled out and this is how we operate when there is a large incident, large scale.
You guys have all had NIMS training, right? Everybody had emergency government?
Mm-hmm.
No, but apparently I'm just an alternate, so it doesn't.
I thought so.
I would suggest every single board member on both boards does at least the, the, yeah, one, two, seven, the, the entry level ones. Just so you get a basic cursory understanding of what it is. Because honestly too, if we have something big happening.
Call the county.
Well, call the county, but all of you are gonna be involved in some capacity or another at some point. So having that knowledge is, is helpful.
Especially.
Don't we have, don't we have new citizen members?
Training last year.
I don't know who's in there.
Of course I missed it, but I know that the county comes in a supportive. They're not coming to run it.
No.
You know, they, it goes in, you know, goes from our local level to the county. They're gonna come and support. If it's above that, the state gets involved. They're coming to support. It all, it all starts here and that's the important thing. They didn't, we don't just hand the ball off and say it's yours now.
And like I said, we are not in charge. He's in charge of the fire department and he's gonna tell us what he needs. Emergency, uh, EMS, same thing, same situation.
PD, all that.
You know, if you have something in the village.
Disaster, yeah, anything that.
You need trucks from somewhere. We're gonna try to find it for the village or you, or in the town, whatever. If we can't do it, we go to the next higher level.
So I can provide some of that documentation. Maybe that might help him.
I'd be happy to, sure. Definitely, yeah. You know, I think we're getting so stuck in the details of, well, what if this happens and, and they take charge or we take charge and it's just, we need to do what needs to be done at that moment. You know, we don't need a manual of who's gonna pay for what today.
Well, we've got the system on, on hand now and that's what she's been talking about a little bit is that if there's an emergency, we're gonna have a couple of people that can come in and work the computers to put data in and, and look at, look at what's going on. So we can concentrate on getting the assets where they, where they need to go. And we've got these systems set up now.
All right, keep working on it?
We're good.
Discuss, consider sharing your public works equipment. I don't know. Our, our guys share with your guys and your guys share with our guys pretty well.
Do it regardless. I mean, I don't know if we need to micromanage it.
I, I certainly wouldn't.
No.
How are we doing there, Dan? Everything good with the village and town and?
I mean, it's like when they ripped up the blacktop on the parking lot.
Well, I think.
Worked great together.
But I think the question partially was that if there's a piece of equipment that's needed, that maybe we could split the cost if we both needed it, rather than buying, you guys buying one and we buying, you know, us buying one. I think that was the, really the crux of this thing.
For buying new equipment, not for who's got what right now?
Yeah, like you get a cherry picker now.
Yeah.
Would we need one? No, but, uh.
Do you guys have a list of what you?
Maybe we would at some time.
What you need?
What about items? Yeah, but you, you wouldn't buy it anyway.
Cause we have a list of all of our equipment, so I'm just wondering if you have a list of all your equipment.
Oh, yeah. Well, between the two of them, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like an inventory or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they deal pretty well together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe rather than us have a loader and you have a loader, that we have a joint loader that, you know, again, the citizens will benefit from a shared cost rather than, you know, big ticket items like that. Cause you're not using it every day. We're not using it every day, right?
No, but in the winter time when you're hauling salt.
Yeah, then you both need it at the same time.
Need it at the same time. So you really have to have two.
Yeah.
Because you are gonna give up.
Right. What about a baffle? I mean.
We don't need.
We don't need, okay.
But just, but just.
We use our loaders every day, so.
But, but look at like when we, like, we spread gravel on a road, you know, and, and the cus, the, our, our consumers want the gravel swept up, you know, then, then we borrow the, the villages. You know, that's, that's a piece of equipment that I think that I can see, you know, neither one needing it full time. But it pays, but it pays to have one around working.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe it's something that Dan and JJ could work together.
Yeah, no, I think they can.
Things that could be used as a.
As a joint effort.
Yeah. That's where we're buying new to come together. Yeah, when it comes to replacement, you know, whether you guys have it or we have it, you know? Would that make sense then?
I would just say that the two of them should keep discussing this as we go along and when the, the need exists for new equipment or whatever, that we bring it up.
Get more money from you guys, Mike.
To the group. Oh, heck, yeah. We got lots.
Is there anything that you rent frequently that you can think of that you rent, have to rent or hire out?
Well, yeah, me and you just don't have one.
What? I'm sorry?
A track hoe.
Track hoe, okay. That comes up quite a bit?
Yeah, we, well, we put culverts in all the time, but you guys have, you guys hire out your water main digs too, yeah?
I think so.
Yeah, so, I mean, that might be something that benefits of we jointly buy something like that.
Okay, yeah. A ditch mower.
If you and JJ think that, then yeah, get us, get us a bid.
I know, cause we have an operator on our crew that can run one, but that's the whole, the whole thing there, having an operator.
Skill.
Right. How would we consolidate them? Just one dump truck, you do all the plowing, plow the village first and then the town?
No, it's plow the town first.
Alternate year by year?
Sure.
Wait for spring.
Every October, switch off. Every, every other snowstorm. No, no, it's not your turn. Who gets it first though? More than four inches. We're making, we're making progress here, guys. Thank you. Okay. Want to discuss ten-year boundary agreement? Anybody interested?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, we had one before and, uh, you know, you've got like four areas that you're in the process of people, been annexed in one old one and three new ones and, uh, which I don't know how many lots that is. It's gotta be.
Three hundred plus.
Three hundred lots you have going right now?
No, that, you know, that, well, the, the village has got, you know, when you, you talk about like the, the, behind the bank up there at the corner and then, you know, what they, they recently annexed, you know, they've gotta have at least three hundred lots. I'm, I'm assuming that, you know?
I don't know what the exact town is. I mean, it could be close to that. I'm not sure at West Lawn Fortress or whatever it is.
But the, obviously, uh, you know, when somebody wanted, wants to annex, uh, the village does not have to accept the annex, annexation, obviously.
Help the school district out.
Yeah, well, that was my, my other point is.
The school district is a whole different argument.
You know, we, we discussed at length with more housing and what do we end up with? More, more schools, more taxes. Not to say that's a, a bad thing, but, uh, uh, it just seems to be in excess of monies that are gonna be spent quickly. When the school district has already fifty-three million in debt, then now there are gonna be a hundred and over a hundred million in debt. And, uh.
If the referendum passes.
Yes, if it passes, that means they're gonna be paying ten million a year on debt. Ten million dollars a year on debt.
I think some of that falls off.
Well, yeah, but it's added on again.
But it, it's, it doesn't really fall off. They, they take, they take two million dollars off, but they're adding another fifty-three million dollars on. So that's, that's just a fallacy.
They're working on loans from two thousand two, what, what do you say, two thousand two and two thousand four right now? That they're still paying off. So all I'm saying is, uh, to me, it's, it's good for us to have a plan and, uh, you know, if something comes up, obviously we talk about it again, but, uh, the ten-year plan, I think worked good in the past. And I think it's how long's it been since we've had a plan between the two?
Probably two thousand eight.
It's been quite a while.
Longer than that, probably.
Shortly after I started in oh-four that it ended.
Ended, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, to be honest, there hasn't been a lot of interest in a boundary agreement cause on the village side, you look at it like, well, it limits the village and why? I mean, we don't have to limit the village, so why would we limit it, you know? What's the benefit of it for the village?
Well, the benefit of it is to control growth. That you're, you've got the four annexations right now. And are you, are you thinking that you're gonna fill three or four hundred houses in ten years?
We have summit coming in.
It's up to the developers to whether they're gonna do that or not. And I mean, and it's up to, I mean, coming from the, the west, there's an entity too, right?
Not really.
No?
Yeah.
How far are they right now from the town?
Who?
Madison.
They touch.
They touch you?
Across the swamp, yeah.
They won't, they, they won't cross the swamp?
I don't know how they would do it.
We thought they wouldn't cross the freeway either.
Well.
Yeah.
I've met with them.
We have not been annexed.
Cooperative boundary agreement.
Uh-huh, and what have they said?
Well, we're still talking. Have, they were going to reach out to you and see if you wanted to be part of.
Have they done that, Jack? Do you know?
Nobody's contacted me from Madison.
Their long-range plan does not show them coming into Cottage Grove for the next at least ten years.
Okay.
Okay?
Not into the township at all? Okay.
I thought in our last village board meeting, and it was that they did reach out to staff.
They did? Okay. Do you remember that? I don't remember.
I don't remember that. I don't remember hearing that.
Could be. So.
We have not been annexed by Madison, only by the village. Okay?
I'll talk to them again end of next month.
Okay.
Talk is good.
Yep.
So the reason for a boundary agreement would just be to keep school taxes.
To absorb the lots that we have.
We could both understand certainly what's gonna happen, so we can decide how to do things over the next ten years mutually.
So, I mean, did you have a specific proposal or is this just starting from?
No, we should.
You know, do you want to have the conversation, you know, between maybe the three of us? Because Madison will impact all of us at some point in time. So if we, if you wanna end up like Manona where you're touching or do you wanna have some area of the township for you? So you know when you come into Cottage Grove versus when you leave Madison? Have that separation at least. It would take the three of us to agree to that.
Yeah. But it would have to be the city involved too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if Madison comes forward and talks to me or to Matt or whomever, I guess we'll have to have that conversation, but.
Well, we wanna know what they're doing.
Yeah.
Obviously, and, uh, as far as what, what I see is that, uh, Spucker Road north is what their plan is for the next ten years, so. Could I be wrong? Could they change? Yeah. Over on, over on Framrite Road, yeah, there's a possibility they could.
Well, Saguilis is not running for mayor again, so they might change a lot.
Well, who knows? Who knows?
Yeah, like, uh, we're, we're looking at replacing the bridge on Framrite. Our bridge designer, designer will talk to Madison to see, are you going to take that eventually? Are you going to need a wider bridge than what we're putting it in so that it gets built once? Doesn't get, doesn't have to get destroyed in five years to be rebuilt for a wider.
Never seen that done before.
No, no.
Taxpayer money spent well?
I don't want it wasted.
There's enough I like to go around.
I think this, I think this is the same argument we had when they expanded BD, right? When they did that road over the interstate, if I seem to remember right. Yeah. Two lanes. Yeah. So anyway, if, if you want to continue having a discussion at some point, I guess we're willing to talk.
Okay.
So items for next agenda and a meeting date?
I think we, do we have item nine and 10 that we're gonna, emergency government and?
Seven.
Seven, you said?
Yeah.
Seven for Chamber Commerce.
Are we willing to continue talking about a ten-year boundary agreement?
I'll be honest, there's not a lot of interest as far as I'm concerned. I can't speak for other board members, but, um, I mean, if anybody wants to say what they wanna say.
Well, if we, if we do, we, I think it makes sense to have it with the city of Madison as well. So whatever, whatever, it's, it's gotta be them included, otherwise it's kinda meaningless if, if, cause if, if it's just annexing, what, what have we accomplished then, right?
Do what they want.
It becomes a race to meet in the middle.
Right, and I don't know, yeah.
And our extraterritorial jurisdictions already overlap.
Right.
So we've got this kind of DMZ in the middle, right?
Right, cause if we ju, if we just had an agreement with you, what's to stop Madison from coming in, into you? If somebody want, if, if they get a, a developer approaches, wants to be in the city of Madison, right?
It happens, it happens.
Yeah, yeah.
If you just have a plain boundary agreement, that could happen.
We're in, you guys are in a very far northwest corner of the township.
Uh-huh.
Okay?
Yep.
That's basically, other than Framrite Road, Madison doesn't affect you guys one iota. It probably never will, that I see. I don't know how it could. Are you, would you be annexing my house? Would you, but would you be annexing my house? You're right there now.
Maybe.
But there, where's the purpose?
Us annexing or them annexing?
Maybe next month.
They could annex around.
They can't annex what somebody doesn't put in for, just like into the village.
They can, they can drag you in.
How are they gonna do it?
The other landowners force you in. If they vote for, for, I mean, the govern, governor's election.
You're talking.
More residents than.
You're talking blue sky.
Than your two, they can force you in.
You're talking blue sky.
It's a fact, Mike.
Okay. Of, of a little tiny little portion. Is that gonna affect the way I live or where I live? No, not at all, one way or another. If somebody tries to, gets me into the, into Madison or into the village, under those circumstances, it doesn't affect the way I live.
But they've got, but they've got that sewer down there on Gaston Road.
They got what?
They got that sewer.
Well, the Madison Sewer District, yeah.
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 Well, that obviously shows that there's some interest there.
How far does that go?
That's been there for how long?
End of Gaston.
At the end.
Out in the swamp out there.
Okay.
The lowland always gets it. So we got those three items.
Anything else for next time?
You have a date? I haven't heard of dates.
I guess I'd, I'd like to meet before the end of the year. I'd like to, this is more of a, an ongoing thing rather than, uh, talk as chief and talk.
Three months or two, three months?
My thought is though, we're working on budgets and then you have the holidays. When do you find a good date?
December twenty-seventh for you.
No, but I.
Bring your house for Christmas.
Bring punch. And some turkey. But I, but I think January is.
But I, but I think January is a good time. I mean, everyone should be done with budgets.
Right.
You know, through the holidays.
Holidays.
Yeah.
If you have people traveling.
You know.
And this is the fourth Thursday, right? Because that's what we've been trying to do, yeah, because that's what we did in the past.
That'd be the thirty-first of January.
Well, that's the fifth Thursday.
The third, we got five Thursdays in January?
Yeah, that would actually.
Just pick the fourth, that would work.
So the twenty.
Fourth or the fifth.
Either one would probably work.
It would work for me.
Fourth or the fifth Thursday?
Fifth would work for me.
Fifth, you mean?
The thirty-first.
Thirty-first, that works for me.
Fifth Thursday's fine.
Thirty-first work?
What's the date?
Thirty-first of January.
Thirty-first of January.
First of nineteen. Need at the village?
Sure.
Yep, sounds good.
We'll bring the punch.
No holidays.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Super Bowl's coming up right after that.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Packers are going to be in the Super Bowl, right?
With that. Well, it depends how many more penalties they're going to call.
Yeah.
All right, does the town board wish to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, it's non-debatable. All in favor saying aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
For the village?
I'm going to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Troy, second by John Williams to adjourn, non-debatable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.